Okay, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. We welcome you here tonight. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you're staying, we'll have our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Let's pray, please. Heavenly Father, we are grateful that you have given us such a pleasant day. We are grateful for all of the many blessings that you have bestowed upon not only us here at this dais, but to the citizens that we serve. We ask, Lord, that you would be present tonight in these chambers as we deliberate the issues of our city. And we pray, Lord, that the decisions we make here tonight will be in the best interests of those that we serve. We make our prayer in your son's name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda tonight is a special presentation. Mr. Wheeler, I think you want to introduce some new folks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is going to be the first of what I hope will be a regular feature. We would like to introduce you and introduce the community to our new employees as they come onboard. We invite them to come, and some may not be here because they may be working, some of our police folks, or have other commitments. But if they're not here, we'll continue to re-invite them. But as I call your name, if you'd please come up to the dais and just introduce yourself to council and the public and just tell them what it is you'll be doing to the city. We'll do it by department. We have two employees from the library, Amy Blow and Anne Marie Amonte. If you all could come forward, please. Right there, please.
Okay, my name is Anne Marie Amonte, and I'm assistant librarian at the library. I came on a year ago tomorrow, as a matter of fact. So it's very nice to be here.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Blow. I started working in October, and I'm the reference librarian at the library.
Great. Good to have you, Amy. Thank you for coming tonight.
From our economic development department, Trey Brundage. Trey's been working with us this summer as an intern.
Hi, I'm Trey Brundage, like Randy said. I've recognized a lot of your faces. I've talked to some of you before. Basically, I came on to work with Dave for the city in May, and I've been working on an economic development website, which we're showing around to all the departments to see if they can, see if they'll approve. And I've also been working on organizing city property and just public property in general. And I also wrote a grant for the city, a Virginia Tourism Corporation grant for $5,000 that we received and we're currently working on to help out with marketing in the city and helping with Coast to Seafood Festival. So that's been done.
Were you here last year, Trey? Were you here last year?
No, I was not.
You did not? Okay.
It's my first year.
Okay. Welcome aboard. Thank you for what you do. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Are either of your people here, Jeffrey Graves or James Wenzel? Okay. The fire department now, at least two of them are here. Clay Cooper, Natalie Marshall, and Michael Insley. You all would come forward. It's on Michael.
How y'all doing?
Hey, Mr. Cooper.
I'm honored to be working here in the city that I live in. I'm coming from another jurisdiction, trying to bring a little bit of experience from what I've learned there and learn from, you know, everybody here. And, man, my heart's pounding a little bit. Yeah? A little nervous. That's unlikely.
We're glad you're here.
Yeah, I just, you know, I'm honored to be here. I live in PCOsen. I've lived here for 16 years, and, you know, I hope I never have to come to anybody's house for a call, but if I do, you know, I think I can do a good job for you, you know?
Welcome, sir.
All right.
Thank you. Glad to have you. Thank you so much.
My name's Michael Insley. Just joined the fire department August 15th, and has always been a volunteer down here and finally turned into a career.
Good. What's interesting about Michael is that his grandfather was in the volunteer company for years and years and years, and his father, Buster, just retired after 30 years, 32 years. And I think the day after Buster retired, you went to work.
Pretty much.
And I think, I just think that's great. It's good to have you onboard, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Appreciate you being here.
Okay, and lastly, at least one of these folks is here from Public Works, Keith Hicks. Keith here? Tom? Nope. Dennis Morgan and Bodina Wright. I know Bodina's here. For the many, many people that call Public Works in the past and talk to Pam, Bodina is the most recent and hopefully very long-term iteration of Pam. She's doing an excellent job.
Hopefully, thank you. Like you just said, I've replaced Pam. Everybody is still calling for Pam. So that's nice. I have really big shoes and a short stature to replace, but hopefully I'll do a good job.
You'll do fine.
Thank you.
We're glad you're here. Thank you. Appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
Bodina, we haven't hired Mr. Warren for anything, have we?
Yeah, we're still working through his application.
Okay. Let us see that application before you deal with it. Before we move on to audience for visitors, let me just say something, and it hit me when the fire department, when you were introducing Randy, the new folks in the fire department, a couple of weeks ago, a couple of Saturday nights ago, I believe, a serious fire in this community, and a well-known family was devastated by that fire, and they lost their home. They were not at home at the time, and our manager actually saw the flames and the smoke from his home and got there as quickly as he could and entered that home as it was, I would call it, fully involved, to the point that the fire department did not have to do any searches or rescue when they got there because Randy and Bernie Wright had already been there and made sure that those children were out of that house. Randy, I just want to, on behalf of this community, say thank you for that disregard for your own safety, to act in that heroic manner, I think is just so commendable. And I don't think that it will stop at me saying a little something about it tonight. I certainly wanted to say something at the start of this meeting so that we've got the most television audience, and before those folks slip off to bed, I want them to know what kind of a manager we've got. Not only is he personable, he's doing an excellent job, but he's got some bravery in him as well. So we thank you for that.
I think these men and women that I have had a chance to work for and with for over 20 years, they've taught me at least something, and I'm very appreciative of that.
Okay. All righty. We are under audience for visitors. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address council on any issue at this time, we'd be delighted to hear from you at this time. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it. Mr. Warren.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, our city manager, Mr. Wheeler, city clerk, Ms. Wiggins, and our attorney, Mr. Moore. Appreciate y'all giving our citizens a chance to speak. It's a privilege to live in a free country where we can speak like this. Tonight, I'm going to try to be very brief with you, and I decided, set in a few minutes ago, I would speak if I was in your seat, members of the council. Now, I am not a councilman. I'm not a candidate for a council. But if I was in your seat tonight, when I left, I would make a note, and I would get a letter from your file, the city file, addressed to Dr. William Crossland in 2001 on down near Langford Lane. This letter, that was written at that time, on the best information I had, I feel like, now, let me back up a second now. I'm not a city manager. I'm not trained for it. So I feel like what he wrote in that letter was sincere, based on the information today. I'm not the city attorney, so I'm not an attorney. I couldn't advise him. So I feel like the letter they wrote, as wrote, they felt was sincere. Had I been what I am, I've worked in drawings for many years. I served apprenticeship. My job was to build things from drawings. Later, I reviewed these drawings for mistakes, and then I went up to Atomic Power Division and did design work under Rick Over, where we had to be right. And I revisited problems, so I know how to do research. Had I been doing research for him at that time, my first statement to him would have been, "Do you think we can get him for being incompetent? Should this firm be turned over to the state to be investigated? The drawings are very incomplete, and they are deceptive, the drawings they read. Unless you interfere, like I am, you look at the drawing and say, 'Well, here it is. It's proof of top implanting.'" But this has been the basis of my research since I started, I moved down 197 mile road and started clearing up the property and trying to work with the people. And it's interesting, when you try to work with individuals, you think you've got all the answers, but suddenly you realize that you're not accepted as smart as you think you are. But I have done a considerable amount of research, and I can assure you that if you take the research that I have given, what I have received and now in privy of, I believe you would revisit the letter and give a new decision, and it will clear up all the problems on that area. I guess you would like to clear up the problems, for sure. And I think the solution is, now, let me say this, the city in the past has always said, as individuals, and I've always said, the city has had a hand in it. And every investigation I've made, that you have looked at, the city as man had a hand in it, and immediately it was resolved. They wanted me to set my yard for 27 years. Of course, I was there then. This was a city inspection. Why was it there instead of where the drawing go from? And that cleared up the problem of the neighbor crosses way there. Go down, look at his backyard now. Used to be he had about a 20-foot backyard. Now he's about 40-foot. Makes a real difference to that gentleman and his family. He's very peaceful, very happy. And that one little thing you find clears up other problems, and there's a couple of more issues in there that should be resolved, and only you can resolve. We can go to court and argue, but y'all can resolve.
Thank you, Wayne. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, let's move on to the approval of amendments. Two sessions. I'm sorry. You may do it quickly.
Quickly? When I was in second grade, too.
Now going to go from second grade to where you are tonight, are you?
Well, I'm 79 years old now. It was 70 years ago, probably, when I was in second grade. But I remember a point the teacher taught us. She probably couldn't teach today. She probably wouldn't be qualified. And it said that, "He who knows and knows not is asleep, waking. He who knows not and knows not, he is a fool. Shun him." It said, "He who knows and knows he knows is wise. Follow him." And I don't think y'all are fools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two sessions, the regular session on July 26, and the work session, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the minutes of the city council meeting, July 26, 2010, regular session.
Okay. Motion made, and second, we adopt the minutes for a regular session, July 26, 2010. Any additions, corrections, questions, comments regarding those? If not, Ms. Wiggins, please.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Judy. And the work session, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, making a motion, we approve the minutes from the work session of July 26, 2010.
Thank you, sir. Second. All right, we have a motion made, and second, we adopt the work session minutes as well. Any concerns, comments regarding those? If not, Judy, please.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Let's move on to unfinished business. The first item and only item is a discussion of ordinance amending the noise ordinance. Randy, bring us up to speed.
Mr. Mayor, your last meetings, member city council discussed possible changes to update the city's noise ordinance to bring it into conformance with recent decisions of the state Supreme Court. Following that discussion, members indicated a desire to ask questions and suggest revisions, and you'll see behind the item, the copies and questions that we've received to date. Several people worked on this. Mr. Moore may want to speak to it. He's the principal adapter of the model ordinance, but I think at this point, we're looking for direction. There's some of these questions that are contained are excellent questions, but I'm not sure that anyone on staff is particularly well-prepared to discuss audio engineering. So it may be, that may be one of the options you may want to consider, is for us to go and solicit some services to assist us in those items. But Wayne, more to add?
I mean, what I did was very simple. There were two primary ordinances, as a model ordinance, which was established by VML, and then the city of Virginia Beach adopted one of the first ordinances, putting into effect the new noise provisions based on that Supreme Court decision. This ordinance is modeled after those ordinances. I do not have a clue what 65 decibels sounds like, or 110 decibels, or what it sounds like four feet from the wall, or 10 feet from the neighbor's window. This ordinance is purely a rendition of what the model ordinance and what the Virginia Beach ordinance was, and what research background went into those ordinances, scientific data, I do not know. That's the best answer I can give. Do we need an audio person to help us with this, or?
No, it's not that hard. And I'm not a mathematician.
Somebody needs to tell me.
I know I made some, I made a few of the comments here. It's, I think it's overly restrictive, just to summarize, because it basically prevent people from being able to play musical instruments outside, kids practicing it. It prevent people from having pool parties if you can hear it off the lot. I mean, they talking here about if it is audible at all, which is zero decibels, you know, at a certain place. It's, I think it's way too restrictive for what is written, and I understand exactly what you're saying, Wayne. But I think, you know, live and let live is something that we do pretty well here in PCOsen, and we ought to put something in that isn't as restrictive, but does have specific guidelines that the police can in fact enforce. And then there's some other things in here, like the dog barking. When I look through here on this noise ordinance, I know the number one complaint I've heard is dogs barking. And unfortunately, this doesn't have anything that talks about, you know, a measurable extent of dogs barking and what would get the police to cause the fine. So I don't think we need an audio engineer. I do think we need to soften the requirements in some places and add requirements in others, and that's what some of my comments were towards.
And I largely agree with Tom. And if you just Google, you know, what is a decibel, what's an average sound, it'll give you a general idea to where, you know, 60 is roughly speaking voice, 70 is the inside of an airplane at normal cruising, you know, the white noise inside. And it increases exponentially every 20 decibels, which, it's not that hard. You don't need me to explain it here, but it is something that I think we can figure out on our own and not make it too restrictive and pick a, maybe a higher threshold of sound on some of these.
Well, I don't, right now, I see, there's basically a draft ordinance in here, and there's some comments to it. And I understand those comments, and it sounds like some of them probably need to get incorporated, but we don't have an ordinance to vote on right now unless we go with the cookie cutter. So I'll make a motion that we basically postpone for one more week and give Randy and staff for one more meeting, give Randy and them time to, and council time to feedback on the comments that we see here. And I don't see any problems with any of them. I'd also like to get from Cliff, kind of his interpretation of the ordinance, because he's probably going to be the second most called person behind the, well, actually, he's the first, and we just get the barking dogs. But I'd like to hear from his perspective, if he thinks it's too restrictive or not. I guess, obviously, you've already read this.
I have a plan on the comments from council members, Mr. Hunt, but I have, you know, spoken to Wayne and the city manager at length about the policy and the ordinance. And, you know, what the state of Virginia is looking for are objective standards that we can enforce, and it's a quality of life issue. It's not just about not letting live and let live, Mr. Marie, although I think that's a great philosophy in a lot of respects. It's really thinking about the folks that live in apartment complexes and trailer parks and in close proximity to where they can, you know, during what has been called in the past, reasonable, people of reasonable senses and sensibilities, and how we can allow those folks to live their lives without the interference of noise coming into their property or into their home. And so we want to be reasonable. It's all about being reasonable, but the objective standard has got to be some type of decibel level, because the courts have said, he can't be a reasonable police officer or a reasonable person, because that standard would change depending on who responded to the call. So we need something that's objective. And the current decibel levels that are in there are taken, this is a recommended policy from a city managers association, it's not law enforcement driven. So we didn't set those levels. I didn't recommend those levels. We just obtained a copy of the sample policy. These are the levels that Virginia Beach is currently using, and they're using them to address the noise problems they're having down on the strip and out from the clubs. So I don't think it's overly restrictive, because those clubs are still operating, and it actually worked in favor of the clubs, is my understanding. So I think that if you really want to look at the levels and you question that, the only way we could fairly do that would be to get a sound engineer and set up some tests and listen to it. But what I'm concerned about are the folks that call the police department, they dial 911, and they're complaining about noise coming from a close proximity to where they live, and it's interfering with their ability to live their life the way they need to. So that's my first concern. There's always ways to put exceptions in the code. We did put some exceptions in there, by the way. This wasn't just cookie cutter. I had a number of email messages back and forth with Wayne and Lisa in his office. We added some provisions for animals. We added some other concerns about, one example, generators. We had a number of calls during Isabel about generators running outside at night, and just couldn't help that because all the power was out. So we made an exception for emergencies for the city manager or the chief of police to accept, make exceptions during emergencies when we have to make changes to the way we live during those kinds of times. So it's all about trying to be reasonable, but I'd be very careful about how we go about deciding what the decibel levels will be at certain times without having somebody, some input from, you know, either testing or some input from other jurisdictions that are currently using those sound levels. And I'm like, I'm like Mr. Moore. I couldn't tell you the difference between 65 decibels and 70 decibels if I heard it. So I'm just looking for that objective standard that I'm going to have to measure using a device that we'll have to purchase and give to our officers and train them to use. But I'm willing, I'm willing to do whatever it takes to help make that happen, but just remember, whatever changes we make, higher or lower, at some point impacts someone's quality of life in the community.
Right now, it's all just a judgment call on your police officers as far as?
Under the old policy, there was a reasonable standard. So, and basically, what they did is that they could hear it off of the property, you know, they would, and usually what this was handled by knocking on the door and asking someone to comply. Very few summonses were written. And that's not, our goal is not to write tickets. Our goal is to bring people into compliance so we can live together, and everybody has a high quality of life. That's the goal. So, and normally, we didn't get engaged in these type of calls unless there was an actual complaint. So, you know, there's no proactive patrolling the city looking for loud noises. It's more or less, if someone calls, then we'll come and listen, and we'll try to address their problem. So most of these are complaint driven, and it's about trying to help a citizen who's called, taking the time to call 911 and has a complaint with some level of noise. And a large percentage of them are animals, as Mr. Marie pointed out. It's not always music. Many times, it's dog barking.
And is there an ordinance on the books now, which, like if someone has a band in their backyard, the band's got to quit at 10 o'clock, something like that?
No. Our ordinance, our ordinance has been declared, like every ordinance in the state, is illegal unless you have, unless you have the objective standard so the police officer can say, "You are creating sound at X decibel level, that's a violation of the ordinance." There is no longer a police officer saying, "You're making too much noise. You're bothering neighbors across the street." Tony, damn, they can say that on a peaceful way, but they can't write tickets or enforce anything.
10 o'clock is too late or whatever.
And again, nothing prevents us from, you know, from doing what some of my neighbors have done in the past. They're going to have some type of activity, asking permission from their neighbors and then letting someone from the police department know that we're going to have an outdoor activity till 11 o'clock tonight if that's not a problem. I mean, you know, we can work with that kind of cooperation, but I think there has to be some objective standard, or we don't have an ordinance to enforce.
Do you know now if Virginia Beach is walking around, the police in Virginia Beach are walking around with decibel readers?
They do use them, yes.
They do use them on the streets or whatever?
And where this all came out was the conflict they were having on the strip. This really wasn't a residential conflict. It was a conflict with the businesses operating down by the waterfront, is where the articles indicated the problem was. But again, every other jurisdiction that had an ordinance similar to ours that used that type of language, it had to throw those out and rewrite them. So we felt that the model policy that was recommended by the city managers association not being law enforcement driven was a great one to start with. And again, without doing some kind of sound test, Mr. Marie, I'm not sure where to take it.
Well, let me say one thing. First, I'd like to second Gene's motion to postpone this. And if you could look at the comments, because you'll see, most of them are not driven, the vast majority of them are not driven at decibel levels or anything like that, but having exceptions for various things. And in the one case of the barking, the dogs, the one that I know is going to be near and dear to our hearts, is it just says, "It's animals which frequently or habitually howl." And frequently or habitually, I think, is a common sense term and not a frequency type of thing. That's where it'd be good to have an objective type standard. So if you could look at the specific comments, and that would be...
And my motion was not based on the decibel, and I don't even see any comments in here on the decibels. So 65, I don't think we're arguing that. I think, Randy, y'all have done a great job, and I see some of the exceptions in here that you're discussing. I don't have any issue with a couple of these other exceptions. Some of them make some common sense. I would just like, you know, the staff to evaluate those, because I think there's some good comments in here, and then we can probably have an ordinance that's acceptable to everybody at the next meeting. That's what I honestly believe.
You want to see him come back as an ordinance?
Yes, not, yeah, not a markup.
Right. I agree. Okay.
And also, I agree with Councilwoman Crawford. There's plenty of information out there, and I went over to our speech and hearing people today, and they pulled up a website and printed me off three pages of decibels from lawn mowers right on through all kinds of stuff. So I don't think it's, you know, we don't need an engineer.
We may need an exception, and I will be willing to grant them one for the air force.
We certainly don't need a traffic engineer or a sound engineer to spend money on.
All right, I think we've pretty well beat that one up, Cliff. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I'll work with the manager, look at those comments, and I will add mine back to him.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Okay, I think we had a motion made, and second, we postpone this item. Ms. Wiggins, I'm not going to ask for any comments.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Judy. Let's move on to new business. First item, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for Kids Island Playground Equipment. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, this is just a formalization of the item we discussed at your last meetings. It's exactly the structure we showed you last time.
It is indeed. And we ought to have a motion for someone.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for Kids Island Playground Equipment.
Second, now?[1749.53]
All right, we have a motion made in second, we adopt the resolution. Any concerns or comments? We look forward to moving forward. Randy, Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mayor Heskey?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Judy. Second item under new business is a resolution making appointments to the library advisory board and the board of zoning appeals. Anyone prepared with some names?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose the following names be appointed to the library advisory board. From the central precinct is Deborah Blackstock, and from the western is Deborah Sterling. The first one, Blackstock's term expires 31 August 2013, and Sterling's term expires January 31, 2013. I'd also like to postpone the appointments of individuals to the BZA until our next meeting.
Okay.
I'd like to actually recommend some of the names to reappoint for the BZA. I'm not sure why do we need to postpone? We have the people that are willing to serve again.
Well, I think, we owe him either a...
Second.
Yes.
Okay. All right, we have a motion.
You can say whatever you want.
Now, I'd like to say, we have two names here that are willing to serve again, Mr. Beeland and Ms. Wissinger. They've been serving, and I believe they've done a good job, unless there's something I don't know about. And I don't know why, we always seem to reappoint, I don't know why we wouldn't do it now.
Is it that all?
I don't think it was personality-driven, I think we just didn't all have time to review all the other names.
Tracy, I thought that BZA appointments came from precincts, like the planning commission and school board, and I found out earlier tonight that BZA appointments do not come from precincts. They're more or less really appointed at large. So, I mean, I think I'd just like to go back and see the other names that, you know, are on our list of the bank board appointees.
I agree. And like I said, putting it off for one meeting doesn't seem to make a big difference, so that you can do your research, and I understand that.
Thank you.
I'll support this.
Okay, comments are noted, and we have a motion made in second that we adopt the resolution with those two ladies' names inserted, and also that we postpone appointments to the board of zoning appeals until our next meeting. All right? Any other comments, any concerns? If not, Judy, please.
Vice Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Marie?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
And Mayor Heskey?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's move on to item three. It's an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for FY 2010. Mr. Wheeler?
Just maybe there are essentially four items, although one of them has a few pieces to it. The first is to carry over and appropriate the ARRA money. That's the money we are currently putting to good use on Smith Creek Road. Additionally, we received some additional money from VDA for highway maintenance, which we would like to appropriate further, to appropriate the funds stemming from the issuance of bonded debt for the middle school boiler replacement. And then, there are a small handful, five exactly, of minor year-end budget amendments. We'd like to move money within the general fund, just to cover all of the individual department allocations.
Okay. Did it?
Yes, sir.
All right, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, we approve an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year 2009 and 10.
Okay. The motion is made to adopt the ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for FY 2010. Any questions, concerns, comments? If not, Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilman Marie?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Mayor Heskey?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
All right, Judy, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just a question. Beginning of the meeting, we never made a change to the agenda to include, or did we make it?
Item five?
To approve the pay raises.
We're gonna do that under item five of the amended agenda, and I'm gonna ask you to put it on the agenda in just a couple of minutes.
I didn't see that.
The amended agenda has it on the bottom, but...
We will ask for a motion in a second to put it on here.
No, that's fine, that's fine. Okay, Randy?
Mr. Mayor, as a follow-on from council's discussion of last month, staff, specifically Tom and his crew, Theresa, myself, Judy, and others, went about to try to come up with some cost-effective solutions to some potential service enhancement areas that was of interest to council. The first began, the last discussion, with the discussion of leaf pickup, and should the council wish to, we can move forward in the beginning, in the middle of October through the end of December, and do a curbside leaf collection program at no additional cost or fee to the citizens if they would put it at the edge of their property in clear plastic bags. And we think we can get that on an every-other-week basis within the staff resources that we have now, at no additional cost. A bigger challenge was a way to provide at least some standard ability for folks to deal with their own bulky waste, and we expanded that quickly to include landscaping debris and white goods. And Tom really outdid himself in finding a way to get this done at a very reasonable cost, and he may wish to speak to it, but essentially, what we can do is, on every-other-week basis, on presumably a Saturday, but it'll be a weekend day, and obviously, Saturday is preferable, we can establish what I would call a temporary convenience site. We do that by rolling in three trucks. We have one for white goods, one for landscaping debris, one for bulky waste. We'll be staffed by the folks that we have that are qualified to operate those trucks and assists our citizens, and essentially, we have it for a limited-time duration for the day. They come in, the citizens come in, they drop off their stuff, we assist them with that. At the end of the day, we close up, clean up, and we're gone. So, the idea of having to maintain a perimeter or anything like that goes with us. And Tom believes that utilizing his staff to be potentially augmented by staff that are qualified from other departments, that we can provide this service year-round on that every-other-week basis for approximately $17,000 to $18,000, and year-round. And I think that's a very cost-effective way to provide an enhanced level of service to our citizens. Tom, did you wanna speak to either one of those? Move forward.
While he's coming up, could we get just a definition of each of these three categories, just in general? Bulky items, landscaping, and white goods. Could you just define that real quick?
Well, the bulky item stuff is like if someone's cleaning out the garage, you know, an old couch, or they wanna get rid of some old furniture, or, you know, whatever junk, basically, you have lying around. Landscaping debris is, you know, it's really, it's not really for people cutting down huge trees and stuff like that. It's for the regular citizen, you know, to trim their bushes and put a little bit of, you know, the trimmings from the bushes, a limb that falls, you know, out of a tree, basically, that stuff. You know, usually, the larger trees, it's really not made for that. It's just not cost-effective, you know, for us to do that. Usually, you know, a contractor comes in to cut those items, and we don't take contractor-generated material, just... So, and then the white goods, you know, if your refrigerator goes bad, if you got a, you know, washing machine, a dryer, just stuff like that, any kind of metal stuff, you know, and that's, you know, that goes to a separate place, and we actually use that as part of our recycling program. Actually, it goes to Sims Metal, and they, you know, we actually get credit for that. And the same thing with our landscaping debris. Any landscaping debris, you know, that gets brought to the site or that we pick up actually goes to York County, and we have an agreement with them that all of that type of stuff has to go to them. You know, we're in the, it's a VIPS program, so... Any other questions?
I wanted to clarify, bulky items does not mean a bulk of little items that could otherwise fit into your trash can. Individually, it means large items.
Well...
That don't fit into a bag or a trash can.
Larger items than that also, and really, you're not supposed to put anything that goes in your trash can. If you go out and you stick a broom in the top of your trash can, and the people see it, they won't pick it up. Your trash is for, you know, household garbage, basically. So, nothing should go in your can, other than household garbage.
So, you wouldn't be taking people's leftovers from the meals and that type of refuse?
You talking about at this convenience site?
At this site, that's not bulky landscaping or white. It's not household trash.
You shouldn't bring your household trash.
But you were gonna have employees there to make sure that people don't do that, don't throw cans of paint in and items, hazardous materials.
Well, the main thing we have, you know, what we need to do there, I mean, you're gonna have people that probably have a pickup load of stuff or something, a larger item that they're gonna need help with, and you can't actually, you know, I looked into containers, you know, but they're very expensive, you have to have the people come in and haul them in and out. And also, a regular person can't pick up a dryer or something of that nature and pick it up and throw it in the back of one of those containers. So, basically, we figured having the trucks, they're already paid for, you know, have them there, and they have the capability of picking that stuff up. And with, you know, with the men that are there with them, we're gonna help the people, whatever it takes, get their stuff, you know, in the proper place.
Essentially, what you've done is exactly what we asked you to do at our last meeting, and then some.
Right.
Was a really cheap price.
Was a really cheap price, and my hat's off to you, Tom, and, you know, I think we oughta say, "Let's go, move forward, it's in your hands," and I'm comfortable with that.
And with this, then, we can reevaluate the rates for pickup at the curbside, and I'm good with that, hearing that we're gonna offer equivalent service.
Well, I think we still need to keep the same program that we have, because you're always gonna have the little old lady that doesn't wanna come down there, can't haul their stuff out there, and you're gonna have the people with no pickup truck that can't bring their stuff to a site, and it wouldn't be cost-effective for them to pay a neighbor or somebody 30 or 40 bucks to haul their stuff down to the site.
But this could really...
Just to pick it up.
This could really save us money without even changing that ordinance, and why don't we just give it some runtime and see how our returns look?
Right, and...
That's what I say, let's let them go.
Give us some runtime, what Gene's referring to is the fact that we, you know, we pick up $30, and on average, it costs us $130 for the service. So, every time we do a pickup, if we collect $30, we lose $100. If we don't collect anything, we lose 130. I mean, and this will help, this will help in that area of having us not have to spend as much.
And it'll help the citizen by not having it in his front yard for a week.
That's why this is a really excellent job. Good job, Tom.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Tom, too. We, I know we talked about this back when we still had owner green bags, and I'm glad to see that we're finally doing this. And I'm also glad to see, if we're gonna spend money, we're giving it to city employees, you know, let them work and make some more money. So, I think that was a great way you worked it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Tom, before you leave, I'd like to also thank you for an excellent job, you really did one. And I'd like one clarification point while you're up there. When it talks about bagging the leaves, said you could leave your leaves?
Yes, sir.
In the front yard and be picked up every other Monday, and every other Monday from October 15, and then if there was an option to, if you didn't wanna set them in your front yard, to bring them to the convenience site?
Well, what we were gonna do is, if you actually, you know, with the convenience site open, we were actually gonna offer that, so, I mean, if you wanna bring them up there, we'll take them. And the reason that, you know, I did this for every other Monday, that's kinda the off day, actually, we do equipment maintenance on that day on the debris trucks. As you know, they run quite often. And, you know, what I'll do is I'll flip-flop trucks around to do that, and I'll put, you know, whatever it takes, we'll try to get those leaves up. And being that it's a minimal amount of time, you know, just a few months, I think we can handle it. I think we'll do it on a trial basis, and if it works out, I think, well, I think it will work out. But if it takes an extra day, if I can't get it all, if it's overwhelming, you know, I'll just send another truck out Tuesday morning to finish it up. So, you know, we'll try to work out the kinks as we go along. As you know, anytime you start something new, there's gonna be some stuff to work out, and, you know, we're up to the challenge of doing whatever we need to do to make it work.
You did a nice job, thank you.
You did.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Wheeler, what I'm hearing is that we move forward with your proposed plan.
All right. Without objective, without objection, we'll move forward to put that in place on or about the first of October.
Okay.
And I realize the leaves come a little bit later, but it'll give us a few weeks to get the word out to people. Tom has an excellent job.
All right, can I get a motion to your place, item number five, on the new business employee compensation on the agenda?
Please, so many.
All right. It's made in second this week.
I screwed up, since I can't do it.
We add item five on the new business employee compensation. Ms. Wiggins?
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Marie?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Hunt?
Aye.
And Mayor Heskey?
Aye.
The motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, Randy, you want to kinda do a briefing on the work session and what council has decided, please?
Members of council, pursuant to your earlier conversation in work session, I think all of us agree, and certainly, members of council spoke to this, that among the things that make this city as fantastic a place to live and work as it is, is that we have tremendous, tremendous employees. And one of the things that we had hoped to do, but were unable to do in the adoption of the budget process last year, was to recognize that in terms of a compensation adjustment for the employees. And since the close, that budget process, and as we moved through the close of the fiscal year, we determined that our financial position was stronger than we had anticipated as we were in the midst of the budget process, and over the course of the last few months, we've discussed individually and today in work session, the idea of providing a compensation adjustment for our employees, the compensation adjustments that was the consensus choice coming out of the work session, and is offered for your consideration as agenda item ordinance three, alternative three, would, if approved, provide a $1,000 compensation adjustment in the current year for all city full-time employees, $500 for all part-time permanent employees, and that those compensation increases would be made part of the permanent salary of those employees effective with the fiscal 2012 budget.
Okay, all right. Just to comment, just very briefly, and other members of council may want to comment as well. The reason that our financial situation is what it is is because of our employees. It's because of those folks who will take on extra duties, they will take on extra projects, they will stay late, they will come in early, they will do whatever is required to make the city run as efficiently and as effectively as we possibly can. You know, these folks are the engine that makes the city run. There's absolutely no question about that. And so, we are indebted to you, to all our employees. We realize that, you know, a lot of good things happen in this city, not because of the seven of us sitting here, but rather for the, just over 100 of the folks that are employed by the city of Pecosa. So, I'm delighted to be one that will support this. I think it's the right thing to do, I think the timing is right to do, and had it not to do. And had it not been for them, we wouldn't have extra dollars that we could do anything with, let alone do some, some increases. So, I'm, I'm just as full of praise as I can be for our city employees. And I know that, that I worry them to death during the week. I apologize for that, but they are always responsive, and they just go above the call, Randy, as you have learned and known. And that just makes my job so much easier. And because when it becomes a, you know, when it becomes a chore, I'm not sure that you want to be part of it anymore. But the staff makes it such, such an easy thing to do that, you know, if I have any success over my thirty years on council, it's because of the staff of this city and not because of me. So, I'm delighted to, to support it. And unless anybody else has a comment, I'm ready for a motion, and we can let staff go to work and make this happen.
May I make a motion that we adopt an ordinance using alternative three?
Yes, sir.
In preparing and offering our city employees a raise across the board. And that's my motion.
Okay.
I'll stop in this.
Okay. Wait. One motion in three seconds. That's good. Okay. I'm not going to ask for any comment. Ms. Wiggins, please?
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Creaker.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hesley.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Judy. After we do our council directives, I'm going to need a motion from someone to postpone our closed session. We really don't need to have that tonight. There are some issues that staff needs to...
We can do that. We can do that.
Besides, that is Gene's birthday, and he's got to get home to a big party.
That's right.
Wendell, you're invited to the party.
Come on, Wendell. Come on my house.
At Gene's house.
Right there.
Soon as we leave here.
Good birthday.
Soon as we leave here.
Okay.
Tom, any comments tonight, sir?
I, oh, you want to ask Randy if he has any first?
No.
No? Okay, good. Good. I have one comment, and it's something that we talked about before, and that is the mosquito spraying that's done by the Air Force. We have been blessed this year in general by far fewer mosquitoes than in the past. We had a real uptick before. And the city, I think, is, has a, a good program for mosquito control in, in two of the three areas. The two areas are, when we get problems reported, the city can send out a spray truck and take care of, of those particular areas. And then also, the city goes and, and gets rid of standing water, which are mosquito breeding grounds on public property. The part that, and this is the request I have, we received something from the city manager a couple of weeks ago that had to do with the chemical that the Air Force sprays. And according to the, this, the materials safety data sheets, which basically put out the toxicities and other things for the material, it does affect humans in negative ways. It's thought with reproductive toxicity, but that's not surprising. And I have a real fundamental concern with aerial spraying of, of the entire town when you're, when you're spraying people too. And I'd like to see a better chemical used by the Air Force. It's, it's not good for people. None of them are, especially when you spray it everywhere. But this particular chemical, when you look at it, it says on the MS, the, the material sheet, that it is toxic to fish, birds, and other wildlife. Keep out of any body of water. Do not contaminate water when disposing of washwaters or wastes. And I can tell you for a fact that when the Air Force sprays, they spray water, everything, and a lot of Pecosin is water. And so, then I went to another database and looked, and they say that, not surprisingly, this material is very, is toxic to insects, which makes sense, because what we're trying to do is kill mosquitoes here, but it is even more toxic to aquatic wildlife. So, I really would like to see us not do any spraying until, well, for the last spray of this year. And also, when we do talk with the Air Force, to have them look at a different chemical that is not as toxic to aquatic wildlife. So, that's my one item.
All right. Good deal. Mr. Freeman?
Couple of things. I recommend we let Mr. Jones's program run for two or three months, and then I'd like to bring that burn ordinance back up about, I don't know, November, January timeframe, more or less.
Sure.
The manager had said something in one of his letters about a mission to send a letter to the state DMV. Were you going to bring that up, Randy?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Well, never mind.
Please go ahead.
He's going to bring that up. Only other item was, I totally and completely agree that our city employees are just a little bit on the other side of absolutely wonderful. And I was happy that we had the money left to do their pay. That's all.
All right, sir. Frank?
I think Kerry said it all. I'm good.
Okay.
No. The only comment I have to make is that I'm glad we're able to do something for our city employees. They certainly deserve it. I share Tom's concerns about some of the chemicals and that. I'd like to see us be able to have a spray that might kill mosquitoes and not kill the aquatic life. And I wish our city employees the very best and wish we could do a little bit more than we've done.
Absolutely. Thank you, Tom. I mean, you're right.
I did one of what everybody has said, and with the mosquitoes, I'd like to just mention that I've been kind of watching my own yard. And when we have the dragonflies, we, early in the summer when it was really hot, the mosquitoes were down. And then we had a good rain, and mosquitoes came back. And there weren't so many dragonflies initially, but as the week went on, the dragonflies increased, and the mosquitoes went down again. It took, it took less than a week, really, for my, for the bad batch mosquitoes to go away again. So, I think that letting nature handle itself, if it can work, is a great idea, a great way to go. And if nothing else, look for something less toxic. I have one question about the, we're talking about Kids Island, we gave money to them. Do you have any idea when it might go up? Is there a timeframe that they're looking at?
We are hopeful, but I don't, we're not in a position to promise, but we're, we're hopeful that by October.
Oh, that's great. So, early this summer.
That's our expectation.
Okay. And then, happy birthday, Gene.
Thanks. I don't have anything else.
Okay. The only thing I've got is, for our next meeting, I've talked to all, each one of you about appointing someone to the NAS team out in Nassau, and Delma Freeman has agreed to serve. So, with council's permission, we can get that on the agenda in our next...
He doesn't have to be a...
We don't have to do it?
No. And I thought with Mr. Hook starting, all he wants is your endorsement of his...
Okay. Do we have, do we have the endorsement of council then?
Sure.
Okay. Because I think he's, I think he's the right man at the right time for, for some projects that, that I think he can be very, very helpful to the city of Pecosin. He's quite qualified, and he's committed to this city, and he's just all-around good guy. So, I'm happy that, happy that he's agreed to do that.
All right, Randy?
I'm going to be last.
Thank you. On behalf of all of our employees, thank you. The leadership tonight on the compensation issue, greatly appreciated. And we probably won't, you'll get tired of hearing us say thank you before we get tired of saying it. So, thank you again. Councilman Freeman did reference the recent decision by DMV to change the way that online dealers can interact with the DMV local service center here. Essentially, the state decided that if you're a dealership and you have online capability, at first I thought that was an online dealer. But that just means if you have an internet connection, that you could no longer, first of all, that you had to process all your stuff through the state DMV online. And in the old days, meaning prior to July first of this year, if you had a problem, you came to the DMV's select here or any others across the Commonwealth, and normally got same-day, if not half-day, service on all but the oddest of problems. And that's a degree of service to our local businesses and the citizens they're supporting, which I think we'd like to continue. And what's happened is instead, they're now, they being DMV, are pushing the dealers to the full-service centers. And they didn't do anything to help the full-service centers get ready for that. So, now, what could often take less than an afternoon can take a couple of weeks, which is creating problems for our dealers, their customers, which are our citizens, and really frustrating everybody. And what I'd like to do, without objection, is to, to send a letter to the appropriate folks, including people in our delegation, and ask them if they wouldn't relook at that. I'm sure the, the objective was good, but I think now that we've had a little bit of experience, perhaps we could accomplish much of the same thing by simply rolling it back to the way that it worked before, which I think the objective is outstanding service. And the old model we had did that as a state, and I'm not sure this model does.
If I could just add to that, because an issue that, that we discovered and we're discuss, and it has some fiscal impact to what we do here, obviously. We're operating a DMV office, which was meant to make service more, I guess you could get to it easier, you could do all your business at City Hall. If we cut out the dealers from this, which are probably the majority user, then I think we have to start thinking about whether we need to be in that business or whether it all needs to go back to DMV. Because there was not a fiscal offset from the state. It was just, I think they wanted to collect more dollars. So, we've got to really think about, you know, the fiscal impact, because we're carrying a couple full-time employees just in the DMV office with somewhat, some local fund.
You know, in your statement, it was up in New York, one of the counties up there, they had an advertisement saying, do all your licensing here, you know, driver's license and whatever else, don't send them on to the state capitol, because the people up there, they get all the money. Where if you do it locally, the money stays within the...
Portion of it.
Yeah, portion within the county. So, I mean, you're kind of assuming, you know...
We just have to be careful about what we do. I mean, I want to, want to enter into some conversations, but I, I think we ought to all be aware that not only is it a convenience thing and superior service coming out of here, but it's also, we got into this business to help the state. And if the state is going to say, well, we need the dollars, all of the dollars, which tight financial times, I think has drawn, has led them to this decision. So, just want to make sure that we're still on the right plane.
I would think other localities, Gene, like Gloucester, who I think that, you know, started before we did, and then we got the idea from them, would be willing to maybe join us in, you know, a co-letter or whatever, or come on board. And other localities, the same thing, and make it, you know, more than just Pecosin going to Richmond.
I think a co-letter would be a great idea. And also, one of the things that, that we have to be careful of here is this is going to hurt the business model that we have a bit, because last year, we showed a net profit of about a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars out of that DMV office from the, and it, well, Graham, could you talk a little bit about what you think we ought, what, what your thoughts are on this?
Well, the profit wasn't a hundred and thirty-nine thousand. That was how much revenue it generated. It's offset by the cost of the operations.
Which was?
Which was roughly a hundred thousand dollars.
So, we made thirty-eight thousand dollars.
We made, in the past several years, it's been a profit center for the city. Some, some years, five, six thousand dollars, some years upwards to thirty thousand dollars. We, knowing what was going on with the economy last year, we kind of stepped up a little bit with some of the dealers so that we could make sure that the fact that people weren't buying as many cars and weren't generating as much foot traffic, that we were going to tap into some additional revenues from the dealers. Now, the important thing to note here is that we still have many dealers that we will still continue to do business with, because they do not have the online capabilities. We do lose some of the bigger places like Pearson Toyota, Casey, let's see, I'm trying to think, several of the other larger ones and everything. They, their work will no longer come to us under the new rules from the DMV. However, that's not to say that we have not still received a lot of dealer work from those that are not dealer. So, we're going to lose, it's going to be a revenue thing that's going to affect us. However, we can't determine exactly how much it's going to be. I think it's going to be somewhat of a little bit, but I don't think it's going to become such a situation where we're not going to be revenue neutral or still making money for the city.
You don't have a percentage of about what that's going to hit us yet?
Not yet. Not at all. As a matter of fact, not.
But, but would you support us writing the letter?
Oh, certainly. Yeah. As a matter of fact, I've had numerous conversations with different delegates already, because a lot of the delegates have been talking to some of the DMV selects that are not commissioners of the revenue. And the private DMV selects, which there are numerous ones across the Commonwealth, they are up in arms about this. As a matter of fact, when I spoke to delegate Gier, he was already made aware of the situation. And so, there's a lot of delegates up there looking at this from a legislative issue that they can make changes to change the policy that was dictated by the DMV commissioner.
Who? So, would it be better to have, as Councilman Creaker suggested, a, a group letter type of thing? Does that make sense? Or are there some municipalities or some areas that will do much better under the new state rules?
No. No one's going to do better under the new state rules as far as DMV selects.
DMV's taken back the four and a half percent that all, all the localities did making, except for if you do it online, basically allows them to, to draw that money out. So, we'll probably come out neutral, but, you know, it's still wear and tear on the building and all those sorts of things. So, we just need to be careful. And I would tell you that the dealers, that you, it just costs the dealers more money to do all the online filing as well.
Yes.
So, whereas they could bring it here, it'd seem like a win-win.
Time is money. And so, that's the problem that our dealers are having, is the time is money. And it's adversely affecting the folks that are actually waiting for their titles or waiting for their special plates. They could come into our office and get it literally within an hour with, while they're waiting, or now they have to go to the customer service centers where they have to literally drop off their work.
Globalizing as well?
Yeah. The, the dealer association...
They've got a tremendous lobby there.
They have a tremendous lobbying effort going on about this right now, because they're not, they're not too happy about it either.
No, I'm sure they're not.
And no one, no one wins here, except for DMV, who is not having to pay out the money. And they really won't tell us exactly how much money it is. I know it's not that much in Pecosin, and we're one of the larger ones. And so, anyway, but a letter would be a good idea.
Okay. It's on the way.
Okay.
Right, Cleveland?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Gene, you didn't have any comments? Randy, you finished?
Yes, sir. And we don't need to have a closed session tonight.
I was going to just ask if we could have a motion to postpone the closed session?
Slow move, someone.
Second.
All right. Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Creaker.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
And Mayor Hesley.
Aye.
Motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
If we could have a motion to adjourn, please.
Slow move.
Ms. Wiggins, please.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Creaker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
And Mayor Hesley.
Aye.
The motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. We are adjourned.